I'd like to call and order the West Covina Planning Commission for Tuesday, November 28th, at 7:00 PM. As I mentioned, if you want to speak on something tonight, we ask that you fill out a card, and we will take the oral communications first, and then if you want to talk on one of the agenda items, we will call you up at that part in time. I'd ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and stay standing for a moment silent of prayer and meditation, as we ask for guidance and wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. Thank you, please proceed. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Hing. Commissioner Castellanos.
Here.
Commissioner Reddolds.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jimenez.
Present.
Chairman Holtz.
Present. We have approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, October 24th. There are any changes or omissions that have been on the meeting minutes? None? If not, they stand approved. Brings us to oral communications. This is a time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope and duties assigned to the commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included on this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak on oral communications? If none, I'll close oral communication and take this to public hearings. Item number two. This item was continued from October 24th, 2017, Administrative Use Permit Number 17-24, Subcommittee for Design Review Number 17-52, Categorical Exemptions. Applicant is Mark Showman. Location is 3014 Cameron Avenue. The request is for an administrative use permit to construct a 9,525 square foot two-story house, including a 2,360-foot five-car garage, and balconies greater than 200 square feet. Mr. Garcia, who will give the staff report?
It will be I that will be giving the staff report.
It will be I, okay, present. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. The applicant is requesting an administrative use permit to construct a new 9,525 square foot two-story house, which also includes a 2,360 square foot garage. The house requires an administrative use permit for a maximum unit size exception and balconies exceeding 200 square feet. The subject property is located directly south of the South Hills Country Club. The neighborhood consists of a hilly area with varied topography, and is comprised primarily of large one-story homes with several two-story homes. The existing 4,893 square foot two-story house will be demolished, and currently has four bedrooms and six bathrooms. For lots with the lot area more than 40,000 square feet, the maximum allowable unit size is 8,000 square feet, or 35% of the lot area, whichever is less. The subject property is 53,578 square feet. Therefore, the maximum allowable unit size for the property is 8,000 square feet. Therefore, an administrative use permit is required for the maximum unit size exception, as well as the proposed addition exceeds the maximum allowable unit size when a second story is proposed, as well with the addition. The proposed home, again, would have a total floor area of 9,525 square feet. The proposed house, again, consists of 7,165 square feet of living area, including a 1,400 square foot three-car garage, and a 960 square foot two-car garage. The proposed addition is in compliance with all zoning requirements. The front of the proposed residence will sit at over 100 feet away from the front property line. The side setback will be 26 feet to the westerly property line, and 47 feet to the easterly property line. The rear of the house will sit at least 38 feet from the rear property line. The heights of the proposed house ranges from 14 feet and 24 feet, as measured from the finished grid. The second floor includes four bedrooms, three bathrooms, a hall, and four balconies. The applicant is proposing a total of five bedrooms and eight bathrooms. The municipal code requires the approval of administrative use permit for a second story balcony is greater than 200 square feet. The balconies proposed are located on the northeast and south elevations of the house that take advantage of the view. And again, I'll just go over. The balconies are located here. Oh, I'm sorry. Switch over to the second floor plan. The decks are located here, here along the hallway, and on the northerly elevation here and here. And as indicated in the staff report, the proposed balcony is total 1,054 square feet in area. Chart has been included in the staff report indicating the total square footage of each of those balconies as they come off each of the rooms off the second floor. Here's the elevation of the southerly elevation facing the entry courtyard. Again, you can see those decks that are located here. The elevation at the bottom, again, is the east elevation facing the entry courtyard opposite. This slide, you can see the north elevation, which is the view area. And again, you can see the balconies proposed along here and here. At the bottom, you have, see the northwest elevation. You have an aerial view of the northwest. Again, these are, as indicated in the plans that you have received, types of materials that are proposed on the elevations of the house. You have alternative materials consisting of wood trellises, plaster columns, large wood windows, French doors, also wood garage doors, textured plaster, to name a few. Staff review of the neighborhood surrounding the subject property found that the area consists primarily of large one-story, single-family houses that were constructed between the 1960s and 1970s. Staff conducted a survey of 21 homes surrounding the subject property. The houses in the survey are located on Cameron Avenue, Spring Metal Drive, and Los Cereals Drive. The surveyed homes consisted of a mixture of, again, one- and two-story houses with two- and three-car garages. As indicated in the chart, in your staff report, shows the mean-medium lot size square footage of the homes, and the number of bedrooms, floor area ratio of the surveyed homes. The mean is the average of all 21 homes, and the median is the number that falls directly in the middle if listed in numerical order. The medium-sized homes is 3,372 square feet. The house sizes range from 2,924 square feet to 5,055 square feet. The lot sizes of the surveyed homes range from 13,841 square feet to 470 square feet, while the lot size of the subject property is 53,578 square feet. Floor area ratios range from 3.6% to 21.6%. The proposed floor area ratio of the subject property surrounding the surveyed homes of 3,937 square feet. Although the proposed house would be 2.4 times larger than the average house size, the house would be 1.8 times larger than the largest house size surveyed of homes of 5,055 square feet. The Design Review Subcommittee reviewed the plans on August 22nd of this year, and agreed that the proposed addition is in accordance with the Subcommittee Design Review Board. The Subcommittee Design Review guidelines have been met for the first-story homes, and also second story, as indicated in the staff report. Staff has also provided and made findings for the administrative use permit for the maximum unit size exception, as well as the decks greater than 200 square feet. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan, and also consistent with the general plan policies and actions, as well as an environmental determination of categorically exempt, excuse me, since the project consists of a small construction in that it entails a new two-story home on an individual property. In conclusion, again, the proposal is for a 9,524 square foot two-story, single-family residence. The proposed house contains a ground floor, again, of 7,165 square feet, a second floor that consists of 2,550 square feet, and a 1,054 square feet of balcony space. The proposed size of the home, again, as indicated, is 2.4 times larger than the average house size of the surrounding homes of 3,937 square feet, as well as 1.8 times larger than the largest house size surveyed of 5,055 square feet. The applicant, again, is requesting the administrative use permit for the maximum unit size exception, as well as balconies larger than 200 square feet. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt resolution approving the administrative use permit and the Subcommittee for Design Review. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions of the commission. I'd like to also add that the applicant is present for any further questions as well.
Thank you. Is there any questions to staff? Commissioner Reddolds.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, there are no variances being asked for here tonight, right, on this?
Well, that is correct, yeah. That is correct.
And what is the maximum allowable roof height that we allow? It's 25 feet?
So, in this case, it would be 25 feet. So, as proposed, between 14 and 24 feet with this proposal.
And just to clarify, there's a difference on the second-story balconies between what's on the chart and what's in the text. The text says there's a total of 718 square feet, and the chart is 1054, which is the difference of 336. So, it looks like that one was left off?
Yes, actually, you bring up a good point. Good catch. The staff report did indicate 718 square feet, and the hallway that was left out in the chart was the hallway, which is, I mean, the deck, which is off the north hallway. So, you add the 718 plus the 336, which equates to 1,054 square feet.
So, 1054 is the correct amount?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, staff? None? If there's none, we'll open it up to, I'm sorry, public testimony, I'm sorry. Mr. Showman, I have a card here from you. Would you like to come up and speak? You are the applicant, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm assuming you're for the project?
One would be, yes, that would be, I was actually expecting to, yes, I have, that's what I'm looking for, to give a presentation, although staff did an amazing job, and I don't think I need to present that. We appreciate this time to look at the project. The owner, Jose Alvarado, is here to also answer any questions that you might have. My understanding is the reason why the administrative or the planning design review was not enough was because there's a concern about the views, and I have a presentation that would probably make more sense to give you after that comes to light, because maybe it won't, I don't know, because all I would do is repeat what staff has. So, if you have no questions of me, I will smile and walk back to my seat.
Are you living on the property now? The house is going to be?
No, I'm sorry, I guess I should identify myself a little bit better. Mark Schuman, I'm the architect for the owner, who's Jose, Jose Alvarado, if you want to come up and introduce yourself. They bought the property with the sole intention of building a new house there. The house there that's now is pretty old, and really is beyond rehabilitation, and it doesn't work for today's lifestyles and such. So, I don't know if you want to say anything real quick.
Yeah, simply.
What was your name, sir?
Jose Alvarado.
Alvarado, okay.
Yeah, basically purchased this property for my family. We, you know, belong to the country club there, West Covina, South Hills Country Club, and my wife and my kids spend a lot of time at the club, and it's an adjacent property. The house that's there currently now, obviously, has been abandoned for several years. Found an opportunity to build a home there.
So, as we looked at the project, we concerned ourselves greatly with the privacy of the neighbors. We concerned ourselves greatly with fitting in, making sure that the house did not loom over the neighbors as well as in the hill. So, if you look at the site plan, we pulled it back from the edge of the hill. We also staggered the roofs. It starts off at two-story, basically where this two-story is now, and we stepped it down to a mid-level, which is just basically a taller one-story, and then down to the garages, which is the 14-foot that staff mentioned. The idea is, of course, breaking up the massing, making sure it didn't look like a McMansion, but indeed a house that appears smaller than it is in actual square footage. Likewise, with the balconies, it's all about breaking down the mass and providing opportunities for the owners to be able to step out and look at the views. So, I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Alvarado or Mr. Showman? Commissioner Reddolds.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarado, are you currently living in the house that's there now, or?
No, no, I actually live more than currently.
Oh, okay. So, have you ever lived in West Covina, or?
No, but I spend all my time.
This will be your opportunity now?
This is my opportunity to go to West Covina, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
No other question? Okay, thank you.
A quick question, I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm not sure of sequence. Again, if there is other information that I'd like to present that wouldn't make sense until the other question comes up, would I have the opportunity to come back?
Yes, you will.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. No questions, okay? I have another card from, I hope I don't crucify this name, Mr. Sia de Gaveta? Would you like to come up, please?
Sage your body, if that makes it a little bit easier.
Please.
How are you, how's everyone doing today? Good? It's like back in elementary school, you know, teacher reading the teacher card or student card for the first time. My name is Bobak, and I live at 3016 East Los Cereals, which is, I don't know if there's, oh, the map is up. And I'm here to just voice my opinions on the view that will be obstructed with the new construction of this home. Got a couple handouts that I can.
Just to make clear for the audience, you're against the project, is that correct?
I'm against the, I guess you could say, how it will block my view. I'm not completely against the project, no. It's going to create a permanent fixture that will block my city view. So, that's what I'm against.
Thank you.
So, if you go to the first page, I'll wait till everyone has one. So, if we go to the first page, I did my best to, you know, capture what our view looks like presently with the current home in place, where, it's kind of hard to tell, but this little point right here is where the current home stands. If you go to the second page, I've kind of blocked out the area of where the new home will be. That was my rough estimate based on the plans, speaking with Ron at the planning department, and having him actually come out and take a look at where the existing roof line is, and kind of doing our estimate of where the new roof line would be. And so, that's why it's a little bit lower, you know, just of where the existing roof line is for that house. So, the new construction is basically blocking a big part of our view, as far as city lights go, and that's what we're, or I'm concerned about. If you go to the next page, there is a picture during the day, so you kind of get a grasp of what we see when you're sitting outside, you know, enjoying your morning cup of coffee, or inside the dining room, or living room area. And this is what we've been enjoying for, how many years now? 33 years, you know, pretty much born and raised in West Covina, and this has been our view. At one point, we had a view all the way down to downtown LA, but overgrowth of trees has slowly diminished that, and this is what's remaining from our lot and what we value. If you go to the next page.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
This page you were just on, where it shows a house, is that the existing house?
Yes, that's the existing house.
Okay, thank you.
So, if you go to the next page, this is just an approximate view of the proposed property or the proposed home. And, again, this is just an approximate from speaking with Ron. It's an unstructured view of West Covina, looking out onto the South Hills Country Club, you know, South Hills High School, in that direction. This is more of just a broad view of the area, but it kind of gives you a glimpse of what they will have versus what we have and what we will potentially be losing.
Now, is this picture we're looking at, is that the top of the existing house?
No, again, that's not from the existing house, or, I'm sorry, repeat that one more time?
The view that we're looking at, is that the top of the existing house?
No, no, this is just a view of just West Covina.
Okay, gotcha.
You know, just to give you an approximate view of what their view might be like, since we're not actually standing there.
And the picture with the red block on it, is that red block showing what would be blocked out with the new house?
Approximately correct, yes.
So, you still see lights above that in the mountains?
A little bit, just the very tail end. I think in that picture, it shows a little bit more, you know, when you're actually sitting on the couch or at the breakfast table.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Is there any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question. You are aware that in the city of West Covina, we don't have an ordinance for view rights, right, or air rights?
Yes, Ron did mention that.
You didn't, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I saw you're a Realtor, so I just wanted to make sure we're all.
I'm here as a homeowner, I'm not here as a Realtor. So, I'm.
No, I'm saying that because it overlaps with your expertise, so I would have expected for you to know that, but I wanted to make sure.
No, I did speak with Ron quite a few times before, you know, coming here, so we had a conversation, came down to the city, he came out of my home.
Okay.
Mark also did come and visit. So, I pretty much opened communication with everyone here. This is not a very, I'm not just showing up. So, you know, he did speak about that, and I'm aware of it, but today I'm here as a homeowner, I'm not really here as a Realtor.
Cool, good, thank you.
Anyone else? No? Do you have any questions? No questions, thank you, sir.
Okay. And thank you, Sheena, for coming and taking a look.
Mr. Showman, would you like to come up and rebut?
Yes, thank you. I have copies, I believe, I also forwarded a PDF. Presentation is basically the same thing that you just saw, maybe a little bit more accurate, which should give you an idea of the unfortunate aspect of taking somebody's view or a portion of that view. As Commissioner Castellanos mentioned, we are very aware that there was not a view ordinance, and so it was nothing that we took into account as we were designing this. And in fact, we, as you probably know, were required to go around to the neighbors and introduce ourselves, and let them know what we were up to. Unfortunately, that requirement doesn't extend across the street from the neighbors, and this is probably one of the reasons why this neighbor was missed. I took the opportunity that was offered to me to visit and take a look at the view, and, yes, we are going to be part of their view, but not taking all of the view. If you look at the screen, this is the existing house with the new house laid over it, and if you could advance the next slide?
We get to the next slide, Ron, please?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go. So, that's the existing house outline, so I tried to make this as simple as possible, there's a lot of little numbers on there. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And you can see the new house, much thinner and longer, and it does extend towards the south, which is what is taking part of that view. But when you overlay the two, go ahead, go to the next slide, you'll see we're really not that much further out from it. The difference being is that there's a port corchere, that's that little tag of the red, where our one-story garage is, and where our one-story portion is, pretty much lines up with our, the existing two-story, and then wraps around the hill. So, if you go to the next, yeah, if you go to presentation, it's nice and large. There we go. So, go to the next slide, and this shows where the two-story portion of the existing house, and then to the next slide is the two-story portion of our house. There we go. So, our two-story portion is actually behind the hill of the view that is current. It's just that our one-story portion is higher than what's there now. And so, yes, we are taking part of that view, but it is the one-story portion of the house. If you go to the next slide, it gives you a kind of a series of what we're looking at. This is my best approximation of the view that I experienced up at the house. The next slide replaces the photograph trees with just model trees. You can see our house or the existing house right there in the kind of crux between the two trees, thank you. And then if you hit the next slide, there's the basic form of the existing house. So, that's the view that they have now, basically.
What's the tree on the right that popped up? Is that there now?
If you go back a few slides, you'll see it just replaces the trees that are in the view. Do you see those, oh, not too far back. See those trees to the right?
Yeah.
That, when I build the model on it, I have to put trees in front in order to keep that. Those trees are between our house and the house in question.
Okay.
So, these other trees are just those trees in my model.
Oh, up closer?
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
So, there's the house that we are going to be demoing, go to the next slide. There's our house.
Question before I get off?
Of course, of course.
Whose property are those trees on?
Those trees are on the property on, oh, okay, thank you. So, they're not on ours.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. There's our house, and the next slide just simply takes away the existing house, and you can see that the view that's there is still, I think, still pretty great, is not the view that they've enjoyed for 33 years, no, but it doesn't block the views of the city lights at night, as his slides show you. It doesn't block the views of the great San Gabriel Mountains. And as trees grow and such, views change, and as progress moves forward, I'm afraid views change. So, please, any questions, I would be happy to answer them for you.
Are there any questions?
And I have hard copies of these, in case you want to.
You might want to leave them with, any questions? No questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If there are no questions, I'm going to close it to public testimony and open up the commission discussion. This time, who would like to start? Commissioner Castellanos?
Well, I'll say, looks like a pretty good proposal. I do understand the concerns of the neighbor with the view changing. As I mentioned, I mean, we all, we're on the same page about the view ordinance or lack thereof. And as the architect mentioned, as progress moves forward, things change, not only here, but all throughout our city and every city. And with no variance being required, and given the state of the property as it's in now and the proposal, I'm comfortable with moving forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Reddolds?
Thank you, Mr. Ch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. As my colleague to my left said, well, first let me say, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful house, you did a good job. Nice design, you know, it's absolutely gorgeous. Uh, you know, the fact is that there's no variances being requested. There is an AUP, that's why we're here. It, the project as presented meets all of our requirements. It's a foot below what it could be, you're allowed twenty-five feet, it's twenty-four You know, and again, there's no, unfortunately, you know, I, I think most of the view or good portion of the view is being preserved. You know, it's not like it's totally obliterated and you can't see anything. There is still a substantial amount of view available that will still be there. And the fact is, absent a municipal requirement for view, as long as he's meeting everything else, there's not a whole lot we can do. You know, we have to look at it based on the facts that's in front of us. And, um, I'm gonna concur with my fellow commissioner that, you know, in support of the project at this point. Thank you.
Is that there? Commissioner Hang?
Yeah. I'll say something. Actually, um, I went by there today, and it is a beautiful view that you have over there. One of the things that I have trouble with is that, let's say that if he didn't want two-story and if he only want one-story, and if he stayed under eight thousand square foot, he wouldn't be here. He wouldn't be able to even discuss about it. However, and the area that was affected or the view portion is actually one-story, so we cannot go any lower than that. The only reason that he was here was the house is a little bit bigger than eight thousand square foot, and the fact that it's two-story and a certain section of the area, that's why we're here. However, the area that's affecting the view portion, it is one-story. So even if he were to stay with one-story, that particular sections, he is allowed by code. So for that reason, I have to, you know, go with the owners, because, I mean, yes, it does affect your view, however, it's by rights as a property owner, he can do that. And the only reason that we're here is because of the two stories that he requested, which is blocked by the tree currently, and the fact that it's over eight thousand square foot. So even if he come back and he want to build eight thousand square foot, he, he doesn't have to be here. He, it's allowed by code.
Might be that's a question or not?
I'm just trying to explain the whole situations currently. So that's my reasoning for going with the owner.
Thank you. Mr. Manas?
I mean, in the, in the absence of a ridgeline protection ordinance, it sounds like we're really limited in terms of, uh, considering alternatives. Recommendation this evening, it appears that the proposal is within the allowable envelope of the zoning code. There are no variances. More than anything, I think the presentation was well done, that displays, one, the, the pre-existing condition, and then shows the proposal, how it's going to look. And although, yes, there may be, um, impact to the view down to the lower part of the city, I think there was a thoughtful, there was thoughtful, uh, design that was implemented as part of the proposal. I liked the balancing out of the mass of the structure, and obviously pushing the, the higher mass within basically a, a view that's already impacted, I thought was a good cue. So I would have to agree with the whole group in that. Uh, I'm willing to make a recommendation in the affirmative this evening to go with staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, for my seat, uh, I do want you to know that I got the copy of your letter, and I did go out to your location and viewed it personally. And, uh, the, the topography there is very hilly and there's a lot of trees. I mean, there's people in front of you that are down in like a gully, and there's people above you. I mean, it's, it's very hilly, it's very unusual, uh, topography over there. There's many trees over there. But what the applicant is doing is demolishing an existing two-story house and putting a new structure up that's twenty-four foot high, uh, which I, it probably will block part of your view, but again, as we stated here, there's no ordinance in the city that we can stop it for, for view, if you will. It's consistent with the general plan, and it's categorically exempt from CEQA. It has, you know, it's a beautiful, gonna be a beautiful structure, I sympathize with you, but there's not too much, I think, that we can do from this location here, or this diastate, can really stop that. One of the things I would recommend to you is to talk to some of your neighbors that have some of the large trees that are down or on their property, 'cause I know these are very big lots, most of them, and maybe they can cut down some of those trees and, and help your view out. But other than that, I don't see how we can stop it, and I'm in favor of the project. So I will close it, and I will open, ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Castellanos first, and Commissioner Manas second. We have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Hang?
Yes.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Aye.
Chairman Holtz?
Aye, I guess I should ask for the resolution number as first.
The resolution number for the administrative use permit is seventeen dash five-nine-two-five.
So just, let's keep it proper and do a roll call for seventeen dash five-nine-two-five, please.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Hang?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Redholtz?
Aye.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Aye.
Chairman Holtz?
Aye. Passes five-zero. This action is final unless appealed to the city council within ten days. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Takes us to item number three, tentative parcel map number seven-four-seven-eight-seven, variance number sixteen dash nineteen, subcommittee for design review number seventeen dash fourteen, seventeen dash fifteen, and seventeen fifty. Mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. Applicant is Rick Fujimoto Silverado Property Group. Location is eight forty-five South Sunkist Avenue. The request for approval of a tentative parcel map that would subdivide an existing twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifty square foot property into three lots to allow for the future construction of one-story, single-family residential homes on each lot. Parcel one would be eighty-five hundred square feet, parcel two eighty-five hundred square feet, and parcel three ninety-six fifty square feet. Who will give the staff report?
Yes, Assistant Planner Christine De Los Trinos.
Thank you, Christine.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the commission. Today, I will be presenting to you the request for the approval of the following entitlements, tentative parcel map number seventy-four seventy-eight-seven, and variance number sixteen dash nineteen. The project site consists of a twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifty square foot vacant lot. The site is flat, while the applicant is proposing minor grading in conjunction with the construction of the proposed homes, the current topography of the proposed parcels will be maintained. The project site is located in a developed residential neighborhood. The project site is bordered on the east and south by single-family residences. A residential development approved through a specific plan is located to the west of the subject property. Interstate ten is located directly north of the property, and a fourteen-foot sound wall has recently been constructed along Garvey Avenue by Caltrans as part of the San Bernardino Freeway expansion. And there, you could see the site. The notices of public hearing have been mailed to about a hundred and thirty-three owners and occupants of properties located within three hundred feet of the subject site. And additionally, the notice of intent was sent to the list of agencies that may have concerns. Uh, we did not receive any, um, letters of concerns. We did have a few phone calls, and I told them if they wanted to make the statement, um, to send me an email, but no one really followed through. And we did receive a letter from the County of Sanitation District, but they were just providing information that's also provided in, uh, the staff report. Um, and some more background is that on September twenty-six, two thousand and six, the planning commission approved a tentative parcel map to subdivide the subject property into three single-family lots. The planning commission also approved general plan and Westside Area Plan Amendment to change the land use designation from service and neighborhood commercial to low-medium residential. In addition, a variance was approved to deviate from development standards including lot depth, eight-foot walls in the front and side yard, and first and second story front setbacks. The applicant never pursued the development, and the lot has remained vacant. With adoption of the new general plan in two thousand and sixteen, the Westside Area Plan was voided. Therefore, the new, um, owner has to reapply for all the entitlements. The project consists of a request for the approval of a tentative parcel map to subdivide a vacant two, twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifty square foot lot into three single-family residential lots. The applicant is the property owner. The existing property is two hundred ninety-six point fifty-six feet by eighty-five feet, which is a lot, which is larger than most of the residential properties in the vicinity. The lot is located on the southeast corner of the West Garvey Avenue, south and south of Sunkist Avenue. Parcel one and two will be eight thousand five hundred square feet in size with a hundred feet of frontage along Garvey Avenue. Vehicular access will be provided via driveways on Garvey Avenue. The applicant is proposing to construct a two thousand one hundred and twenty square foot, including an attached, uh, five hundred and forty square foot two-car garage and forty-two square foot entry porch, one-story house on parcel one and two. Parcel three will be nine thousand six hundred and fifty square feet in size, with the access provided via a driveway on South Sunkist Avenue. Parcel three will consist of a hundred and nineteen feet of frontage on West Garvey Avenue and eighty-five feet of frontage on South Sunkist Avenue. The applicant is proposing to construct a two thousand one hundred and twenty square foot, um, one-story house on parcel three as well. So all the houses that are proposed will be basically the same, or they are the same, but different, um, orientation. The municipal code establishes a minimum lot size, lot depth, and lot width for lots in the single-family residential zone. Additionally, the city is separated into various area districts that also determine required lot size and dimensions. The proposed parcels are located in area district one. Therefore, the minimum lot size is seven thousand five hundred square feet. The minimum lot width is sixty feet, and the minimum lot depth is a hundred and five feet. The parcels exceed the minimum lot size requirement of seven thousand five hundred square feet and the minimum lot width of sixty feet. However, two of the parcels do not comply with the minimum lot depth standards of a hundred and five feet, and will require the approval of a variance. Parcel three is in compliance with the depth. This is discussed further in the variance section of the staff report that you have. All three proposed parcels are rectangular in shape. All three lots exceed the minimum lot sizes required for the area district in which they are located. Conditions of approval have been included in the resolution requiring the applicant to go underground in all the utilities and construct a sidewalk with trees along Garvey Avenue South and South Sunkist Avenue, and to reconstruct all damaged concrete curves and gutter per city standards. The engineering division has conditioned that the property provide an irrevocable offer of dedication of five feet along Garvey Avenue. An irrevocable offer of dedication differs from a dedication in that the property does not change to city ownership unless, until the city determines that it is necessary. In this situation, the irrevocable offer is recorded, but the lot size does not change. Engineering has requested that the condition due to the requirement of the master plan of streets, however, it is not anticipated that the city would widen Garvey Avenue in the vicinity in the foreseeable future. If engineering believed that the widening would be required, the condition would be for a dedication. As stated, two of the three proposed lots do not comply with the minimum lot depth standards of the municipal code for lots located in area district one of the R-one zone. Lots comply with the minimum lot size standard of seven thousand five hundred square feet and minimum lot width of sixty feet. The proposed subdivision will consist of the lot widths of approximately a hundred feet for parcel one, a hundred feet for parcel two, and eighty-five feet for parcel three. Proposed lot depth of parcel one is eighty-five, as well as for parcel two, and a hundred and nineteen feet for parcel three, where a one hundred and five-foot lot depth is required. The applicant is therefore proposing a variance for lot depth for parcels one and two. Additionally to this application, an MND was required, a mitigated negative declaration. The initial study prepared by Michael Baker International for the project disclosed that the project would not have significant impact on the environment. Mitigation measures have been incorporated into the project's design and as conditions of approval to reduce impacts on the environment to less than significant level. A mitigated negative declaration of impact, um, has been prepared pursuant to the requirements of CEQA. And it is attachment number six into your staff report, and there you would find findings for the traffic, air quality, um, biological resources, export fill, and mitigation measures. Staff conducted a survey of eight single-family lots and the fourteen, and fourteen small lots, single-family lots surrounding the subject property. This survey includes homes on Sunkist Avenue and Sienna Crest. Because the results include a subdivision of small lots and the older, larger lots, staff has provided a chart with information on each. The following charts show the mean, the smallest, and the largest lot with size and depth of the lots. The mean is the average of all sixteen homes. Lot sizes in the area range from three thousand eight hundred and fifty-four square feet to six thousand three hundred and seventy-three square feet. The lots in the specific plan of Sienna Crest are much smaller in size, averaging four thousand two hundred and sixty-two square feet per lot. While most of the lots in the vicinity do comply with the minimum lot depth requirement, um, which are ranging between twenty feet to a hundred and fifty feet, there are four lots in the vicinity that have similar depth as the proposed lots. These lots are located on Elder Street and West Garvey Avenue South, to the west and south of the subject property. Twenty-oh-two Elder Street has a lot depth of approximately eighty-five feet. Twenty-twenty Elder Street has a lot depth of eighty-five feet. And twenty-twenty-five Elder Street has a lot depth of seventy-nine point ninety-eight feet. And eighteen-fourteen West Garvey Avenue has a lot depth of seventy, seventy-two feet. The charts indicate that there is a wide variation in the lot sizes in the area. Not included in the survey is the convalescent hospital property to the east, which is one point eight acres. In addition to the existing lot, um, the lot is rectangular in shape. The proposed three-lot subdivision will allow for the lots to be consistent in rectangular shape as the neighboring lots. The lot depths allow for the proposed houses to meet setback requirements while maintaining a minimum lot size and with requirements for area district one. The property isn't, the property in question is a remnant parcel that was left over as a result of the construction of the San Bernardino Freeway, is located on a corner lot with an existing lot width and depth, and is larger than other residential lots in the vicinity. It is common in the area of the subject property for lots along east-west streets for lots to be smaller than the average lot size for the larger lots. The lots along Mossburg Avenue, Elder Street, Sherway Street, Leewood Street, and Merced Avenue include a smaller lot sizes and lot depths that average for large lots. Therefore, there are extraordinary circumstances based on the shape and existing conditions of the existing lot. The proposed single-family houses comply with all one-story setback requirements. Additionally, the proposal has been reviewed by staff and subcommittee design review board, affording the application to continue to be reviewed by the planning commission, seeing that they met the subcommittee design review guidelines. So here is a site plan of the subdivision, as you could see, um, let's see. These two parcels would be the ones that don't meet the lot depth requirements. This is a chart that shows a quick summary on the sizes of the proposed single-family residences. The floor, the floor plan for the proposed houses on parcels one and two will be the same and will consist of a total square footage of two thousand one hundred and twenty square feet, including an attached five hundred and forty square foot two-car garage and a forty-two square foot, front, foot entry porch. The only difference between one and two is that they will be oriented the opposite of each other to create variety. The interior layout would provide four bedrooms, two bathrooms, a living room, dining room, kitchen, family room, and laundry room. The floor plan for the proposed. The floor plan for the proposed home on Parcel 3 will be similar to Parcel 1 and 2. However, the front entrance of the home will be located on West Garvey Avenue South, and the garage entrance will be from South Sunkist Avenue. The proposed single-family residences feature a traditional ranch-style architecture. The houses will incorporate a hip-style roof. All three houses will feature roof shingles, stucco exteriors, wood siding, woodstone wainscoting, vinyl window shutters, potshelves, window treatment, and varying window shapes. All the proposed houses will include an entry porch. And here are a few examples of how the home may be and what is inspiring the house. So here is a floor plan of Parcel 1, and here are the elevations. If I'm going to be going through each one, though they are all similar, you will see that on the elevations, they do vary in color and in material, so it does have some type The project is proposed in an area of the city that is comprised primarily of one- and two-story single-family residential homes. The site is currently vacant. The addition of the three single-family lots is compatible with the neighboring properties in regard to lot size. The proposed project meets or exceeds development standards with exception of lot depth for the two parcels. However, the proposed lots comply with lot size standards and meet all setbacks. The proposed homes to be constructed are designed similar in nature to the homes in the neighborhood. All three proposed homes will be one-story. The vehicle access to the new houses will be via West Garvey Avenue South, which is Parcel 1 and 2, and South Sunkist Avenue, which is Parcel 3. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt resolutions approving Tentative Parcel Map Number 74787 and variance number 16-19. Staff also recommends that the Planning Commission approve Subcommittee Design Review Number 17-14, 17-15, and 17-50, subject to the conditions included before you in the staff report and attached resolutions, to allow the subdivision of three parcels and the construction of three one-story single-family residences. And that is the conclusion of my presentation. Randy, who is representing Michael Baker International, who did the mitigated negative declaration for us, is here to answer any questions if you have any questions on that. And Rick, the applicant and the owner, is also here, too. Thank you.
Also would like to add, thank you, Christine. Staff from the Engineering Department is also present for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff? None? None? Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come up and speak? Please state your name.
I am Rick Fujimoto, the applicant. I really have anything. Christine did a great job in helping with the details, but if you have any questions, we have the opportunity to answer them. Appreciate the attention.
Are you the same applicant that was in 2006?
No.
A different owner?
Yes.
Different owner, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
But you were in front of us recently, right, with another project?
At the end of March, yes.
Yeah. You had a question?
I do have a question. That was a triangle-shaped lot, right? Not too far from there?
Yes.
Cool. Well, yes, Christine did do a great job, and I just wanted to, I'm sure I don't need to, but I wanted to reiterate the dedication that's part of the conditions.
Yes.
Fully understand that, no problem there.
Yep.
Cool.
Yep.
Good. That's all. I just wanted to make sure, although, like I said, I'm sure that was more than clear, and I'm glad that someone's taking a look at this to do something with it.
Great, thank you.
And I like the renderings. I think the way they're designed looks really good, and so I commend you.
Great, thank you very much.
Commissioner Redhold?
Yeah, thank you. Are you going to develop the homes?
I'm planning on it, yes.
Okay. You know, I have a question. I don't know whether, you know, you can answer it. When I went out there and looked at the site...
Yes.
There's a lot of parked cars, you know, really wrapping around the whole, even parked around, you know, the curb and the corner.
Right.
I assume they're all connected to the medical facility.
That's what my assumption is, well, yeah.
I'm just wondering when you, maybe it'll just self, it'll take care of itself when the homes are there, but I don't know how that curbing can be approached to, you know, kind of mitigate that.
Yeah.
Because it was really tight parking there.
Right. I don't believe there's any cars parked on Garvey itself, right, in front of where these houses would be.
Not on Garvey, but it did wrap around the curb.
Right, right. And so the Parcel 1 and 2 are on Garvey. They'll have two-car garages and then additional parking in the driveway there. So, you know, there is parking there, but yes, you're right. If there was going to be a big party or something, then yeah, there might be a problem. Yeah, right, right.
Anyone else? Do you have a target date when you want to start construction, when you want to complete it?
I always have a target date, but it always seems to get pushed back, Ron. But yes, so as soon as, if we were to get approval tonight, then I would start the building plans. And what's taken the longest on the other parcel that you mentioned earlier is getting the final map recorded with the county, and so I'm still working on that for the other project, and I've been working on that since March, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd hope to get them started next year, and I think finishing next year might be a little optimistic, so maybe the following year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to speak in favor of the project? Anybody want to speak in opposing the project? If none, I'll close it to public testimony and open it to commission discussion. Commissioner Redhold?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you and I are the only ones that were on the commission back in '06 when this came to us once before with another project that we all liked and looked forward to, you know, filling up that vacant lot. And, you know, sometimes things just don't work out. But I'm very pleased to see this presentation and to see these three very nice-looking homes that go in there and will, I think, mesh nicely with the existing properties that are there. And the nice thing is, one of the problems we had back in '06 was the noise from the freeway that was an issue, and Caltrans and our tax dollars have taken care of that, putting up that nice retaining wall. So that's not a worry now, so I'm looking forward to this going forward, and you're putting up nice new homes, bringing three new families into West Covina. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Castellanos?
Not much to add. I'm glad this lot will be utilized in a better manner than it is, and closed by freeway access, that's going to be huge convenience. So as my fellow commissioner mentioned, I too look forward to this project moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Hang, Commissioner Hernandez? No? Okay. I echo the same thing that my other fellow commissioners look forward to the project. I think it'll be value-added to the city, and I just hope you can start the project as soon as possible. Thank you. Okay, well, close it to commission discussion. Staff, would you read the resolution numbers, please?
Get a motion. Forget to get a motion?
No, we'll read the numbers.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Let me read the numbers. So, I apologize. So for the resolution for the mitigating negative declaration is 17-5926, and the resolution number for tentative parcel map number 74787 is 17-5927, and the variance number 1619, resolution number 17-5928.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the recently read numbers.
First from Commissioner Redhold.
Second.
Second?
Yes.
Second from Commissioner Hernandez. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hang.
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Redhold?
Aye.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Aye.
Chairman Holtz?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. This action is final, unless appealed to the City Council in 10 days. Good luck, sir. Takes us to non-hearing items, initiation of code amendment, code amendment number 17-02, revisions of the downtown plan.
Perfect. I'll begin that staff report. The City Council adopted the downtown plan in conjunction with the general plan on December 20th of this year. The downtown plan is a form-based code which regulates development in the downtown, formerly Central Business District area. The downtown plan was created during the general plan update, and multiple study sessions were held with the Planning Commission and City Council to review the standards. At the time of the adoption, there was an expectation that modifications might be necessary after the first year to address any issues that were not foreseen when the downtown plan was reviewed and adopted. Staff has listed the standards to be reviewed at a future meeting, and again, since the adoption, staff has made notations of issues that were discovered, and those have been listed. Staff has been working with two applicants on projects utilizing the downtown plan, and those include a hospital and one being a multifamily housing project. In both cases, concerns with standards are brought to light, and staff will be presenting the following, the standards that have been included in the staff report for a future study session. If initiated by the Planning Commission tonight, staff would follow up with the study session to discuss the issues and the recommended revisions to the downtown plan. Currently, staff is processing a code amendment for entitlement processing. The city attorney's office is reviewing the code language, and it is expected to be presented to the Planning Commission at a public hearing in the near future. Some of the revisions including the entitlement processing code amendment overlap with recommended modifications to the downtown plan. In conclusion, the zoning code states that the code amendment are initiated by a resolution of the City Council or by the Planning Commission. Resolution to initiate the code amendment has been provided to allow the commission to take action. Code amendments for the zoning code require a public hearing by the Planning Commission and City Council for consideration. Additional code amendments that have been initiated include temporary signs, wireless telecommunications in the right-of-way, and reader board signs. It is staff's intention to prioritize the downtown plan code amendment. The Planning Commission determines that it is appropriate to adopt a resolution to initiate a code amendment to consider the revisions in the downtown plan.
Just a question, didn't we go over all this with the general plan for most of these items?
We touched on them, but again, as indicated in the staff report, there's been some items that have been addressed to us since the adoption of the general plan. So we'd like to go back and touch on those and refine the downtown plan.
So are we going to just touch on the ones that there's a problem with, or are we going to look at all of them?
We're going to touch on those that need to be addressed...
Okay.
...in the downtown plan.
Is that some of these that are listed here in these bullet items?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Redhold?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, these are standards to be reviewed, correct? Doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be changed.
That is correct. It's up to the Planning Commission. Well, as indicated, if it is that the Planning Commission would like to initiate the code amendment, we'd come back with the study session, we would offer options, and at that point, we would discuss those.
Okay. And these, I believe there's 11 bullet points here, these all were generated by working with just these two projects, the hospital and the multifamily?
No, some have been also brought up, I mean, as staff with applying the downtown planning code, there, for example, again, to highlight the one that the two applicants that we've been working with, there's a hospital on orange. We'd like to address a height allowance for that. And then second, which is the other one? And the standards for special exceptions for the multifamily. And again, as staff, as we've been working through this, we've noticed that we need to refine a little bit. Again, I don't want to get into detail because I want to save that for the future study session. For example, parking requirements for the Glendora shops. If you look at the downtown plan, it needs to be refined a little bit to provide better, better, how can I say?
Definition.
Guidance, there it is, I'm sorry. Guidance to help staff so that when we're helping developers, it's clear to us and the developer.
Yeah. Now, you know, the first 10 are pretty, you know, they're pretty specific. The last one, evaluation of the list of permitted land uses, that sounds like we're starting over again.
Not necessarily. So again, we'll get into detail in the study session, but as we've been working with the downtown plan and the code, we've noticed that there needs to get refined. There are some uses that we need to incorporate, and we'll get into detail with those. But yes, you are correct that we did, you did recommend approval, and there are a list of permitted uses in the downtown planning code that are prohibited and listed as far as what entitlements are requested for those specific uses.
For the record, let it be shown that Commissioner Hang had to leave the meeting due to a prior commitment.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
It just appears, Ron, that you're working with a new downtown plan and figure, or come across some bugs, as they say, and you're just trying to refine or redefine for clarity to assist you in the long run, now that you've had some time to practice with the new code.
Exactly.
Okay.
But I do foresee that this is not going to be the last of any changes.
Fair enough, okay.
So do we have a motion to initiate a code amendment, 17-02? Is that what we need?
Yes. So I'll read the resolution number. The resolution for the initiation would be 17-5929.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Question by myself, second by Commissioner Redhold. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jimenez?
Yes.
Commissioner Redhold?
Aye.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Yes.
Chairman Holtz?
Aye.
Passes 4-0.
So it's a split vote, two yeses and two ayes.
Okay. Takes us to continuation of oral communications. Anybody want to speak? Nobody wants to speak? Commission reports and comments, miscellaneous items, planning director report.
Just a reminder, the forthcoming has been provided to you in the packet. Just a reminder, there may be a Subcommittee Design Review for the December 12th, and again, there is a forthcoming in there that's listed of items. It is going to be a busy meeting on the 12th of December, but we'll follow up with, staff will follow up if there is going to be a Subcommittee meeting.
Are we, excuse me, are we anticipating anything on January 9? You have nothing now, but...
Nothing now. I probably foresee having the second meeting in January, because to be specific, to mail out notices during the break is not recommended.
Right after the holiday, yeah, that's true.
Right.
Gotcha.
There is a meeting on December 12.
Correct.
Big one.
Yes.
Seven items, public hearings.
A gift.
The gift that keeps on giving.
Okay. City Council action.
Just to remind you, on the 21st of November, the City Council held the second reading for the ordinance for the zone changes for the parcels that were reviewed, for recommended changes that got missed from the adoption of the general plan. Otherwise, there is a scheduled City Council meeting for December 19.
For December 19? Is that...
Yes.
Council meeting, council meeting. Yeah.
Nothing else? Meeting's adjourned?
8:07, not bad.
Nice presentation.
I know, I've got a text to you.
I think it's not...
Bill, though.
No, but I usually, I could usually put that up.